Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the township, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build a project.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners, and they understand what we do and what we can do for the community, and vice versa, so we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home.
Kent County, its life well run. That's a significant cut, since there's so much federal money tied to that budget. Cutting that amount of money becomes very problematic. So Senator Marlowe has been given a little bit more time while he tries to figure that out.
Good morning. I'd like to call our Kent County Water Commissioners meeting today to order Thursday, March 23rd. How can we get a roll?
Good morning. Commissioners Womack, Voorhees, Vonck, Tallon, Steck, Skans, Honstein, Morgan, Melton, Mast, Kornike, Coleman, Jones, Hennessy, Bukowski, Breavy, Vice Chair Bolter, Commissioner Antor, Chair Saul Bell. Madam Clerk, you have 18 members present, one absent.
There have been a lot of hearings, but most of the hearings have been simply policy conversations. They've had a lot of groups come in and testify about who they are and what they do and what they would like to accomplish. But as far as moving significant legislation, there really has not been a lot of that activity.
This morning, I'm taking from 100 days of prayer from the Dominican Sisters and their daily prayer for national unity and healing. God of wisdom and mercy, grant us patience to listen, compassion to be open to other views and opinions, generosity to forgive and grace to change. As you taught us to love our neighbor, compel us to be healing instruments of unity and reconciliation. We pray that you give us strength and encourage our nation to move forward in unity. In prayer for one day of this week, was specifically, today we pray that all elected leaders uphold, respect, and unify above blame, criticism, and exclusion.
There's another similar bill being led by the business leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heart, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will be moving to item five, special order of business, as most commissioners have noted. We have a very robust agenda today. So we'll be doing our quality service and play award first, and then followed by our three other.
I would be happy to answer any questions from the panel. But again, I think by the end of the week, I will have much more information for you as far as some of our budget priorities and things that we're watching closely as it pertains to the childcare fund, revenue sharing, those issues.
Thanks, Becky. For the update. So is June 1 still the goal for the project to be completed like it has been under Governor Snyder? I just say it's mine.
Yes, we believe that the June 1 close to that timeframe is still projected timeframe. There was a member of the state's representatives as part of the leadership team.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Deanna Lue, and I'm part of the employee recognition for quality service team. So today, we are here to recognize Vicki Plowman from the Kent County Prosecutor's Office, Victim Witness Division, who was selected as our quality service employee for the first quarter of 2017. The person who nominated Vicki wrote, Vicki has worked for victim witness for 20-plus years and has assisted a multitude of victims in and through the criminal justice system. Her patience, calm demeanor, and willingness to go above and beyond what is required in the job has been consistent throughout her career.
Can you tell me a little bit more about what are the projected cuts at the senate level? You said there's about 125 million that Senator Marlowe is looking at cutting.
After hours on her cases to make sure she doesn't leave a phone call unanswered or a person who may come in at 5:00 left without answers to their questions.
He won't say, and I believe it's because I'm not sure that he knows what he's going to cut on that budget.
One of her coworkers said Vicki treats everyone as if they were her neighbor or friend, and is endlessly patient. Our office works victims in when they are at times at their worst. Vicki has the insight to meet that person where they most need help. A team player, she's willing to share the spotlight with everyone. Even with this nomination, she will say it's the office and not her. She is a pleasure to work with, and we are so pleased that she's a part of our department. Please join us in congratulating Vicki for her notable contributions since Kent County.
So he has not given any indication. I've even tried to go around and talk to the Senate policy budget person on the budget, and he didn't know either. So I've tried every way I can to see what he's looking at, and we really don't know.
Questions for Becky? I just kept going, and two of our priorities are in that budget.
Yes, that's why.
Childcare fund and school services network. All right. Thank you again, Vicki, for your service to the county. We really appreciate all your hard work. Moving on to item B, I would like to bring Ron Taylor us. Ron is going to discuss the Kent County School District knowledge. My clerk has informed me to remind everyone that this is an informative information gathering presentation.
Yes, we're hoping the Senate Director will be able to have a great influence on what does get caught in the possible, because you're exactly right. We have two major priorities sitting in that budget.
Thank you, Becky. I'm delighted to be here today to hear about the strong schools, strong communities proposal that will be on your ballot May 2nd. I spoke with Commissioner Saulfeld. Ah, in front of the microphone? Okay, good. Is that better? I spoke with Commissioner Saulfeld a few weeks ago, and he thought it would be helpful if I were to present this for...
Well, I found out where the bathrooms are in my first three months, so I've got that going for us.
For no other reason than you would understand how it is that we at Kent ISD are able to bring a proposal to the ballot without your input. Because typically, an organization that desires to go on the ballot and ask the voters for resources comes through Kent County. And this, of course, is a Kent County issue, but it's much larger than Kent County as well, because we serve large portion of Berry County, portions of Ottawa, and Monmouth County, and Ionia as well.
First off, I would like to welcome my leadership team and introduce them to you. From my right to left, I have Ron McCumber.
I think we all know that West Michigan is thriving, doing well.
From my right to left, I have Jerry Chaya, our chief deputy register of deeds. Been with the office since 1998. Rob McCumber is my chief deputy county clerk, and he is also almost a three-month veteran like myself. Came with me from the Michigan Legislature. Joni Krulak is our office administrator in our vital records department, who's been with us since 2000. Sudis Steiger, a woman who needs no introduction, is our elections director and has been there since 2001. And then we have Kim Perry, my senior administrative assistant, and I rely heavily on Kim's experience. She's been in that position since 1994. We are missing today Martha Irwin, my chief deputy clerk of the court. She is in Nashville, Tennessee, as her daughter is getting married this past weekend. So this is the team, and they lead a great staff. We've got 43 full-time employees. It is the lowest staff office per capita in the state, so we do operate lean, though sufficiently staffed, very efficiently. I don't want to also thank the performance measurement review team that worked with us to prepare for our presentation to you. We had, it was led by Wayman Britt, Amy Rolston, and Matthew Van Zetten. Collectively, the clerk and register of deeds have, our office has four departments, vital records, clerk of the court, elections, and register of deeds. And I mentioned we have 43 full-time employees with two collective bargaining units. Collectively, our office brought in $7.7 million in revenue last year. $2.3 million of that came from our online services, and the office expanded just a little over $3.4 million. I'm not going to take too much time, I'm not going to take much time at all actually to review the performance measurements that you have in front of you. Suffice it to say, the clerk and register of deeds office is proud yet to again achieve our goal, each of our strategic goals, and met our objectives in doing so. So I want to just take a few minutes to kind of highlight some of our major accomplishments, talk about obstacles, and things that we have planned to address those. Going down to our register of deeds office, probably the major accomplishment in that office this last year was we've grown the number of documents filed using e-recording from 35% in 2015, all the way up to 50% in 2016. It's a great jump, and we think there's room to grow. We think there, realistically, we can raise that number significantly, but having been one of the first counties to kind of pilot the e-recording, we really are proud of the advancement that's been made there. Because it does make the process more efficient and effective, both for the county, for our office, but also for the public. The biggest obstacle I think we're facing in our register of deeds office is aging software and equipment. So we will be working together to assess our current technology that we have in the office, think about our long-term needs to continue to be an innovator in the state and be as efficient as possible. We're going to plan to create a five-year, we're going to create a five-year plan to help meet our technology needs, utilizing the register of deeds automation fund.
We no longer bargain that either, with the exception of getting a bill to let us know what the increase is in that hard cap each year. So really, you know, it's been ratcheted down since we've been under state control to wages are the big thing.
The real estate industry and the market, but those, I don't look at that as an obstacle. I look at that as just part of the process. You know, we've gone through ups, we've gone through downs. The market's always cyclical. So however the market goes, we will be able to adjust and deal with that.
Our high watermark in terms of actual inflation adjusted dollars really was in 2000.
The biggest obstacle facing our vital records department is outdated software. So we'll be continuing to kind of do an inventory of our software in terms of using technology to index and record the information for our vital records and make sure that's translated to state vital records and that kind of thing. So we will be evaluating whether or not we need to, we need to explore updating that software. One potential problem that was raised that could hinder the success of the vital records department that could impact the public is if we did have extended power outage during work hours. We do have generators that, you know, kind of run the basics, but an extended and significant outage would prohibit our access to our software to input that data. And that would result in our staff manually processing those records and requests that come in at that time. Which, yes, it lengthens the process, but the larger concern is that it increases the potential for human error and inaccuracy. Something so important as vital records, those can't be changed just because an error was made on either party. Those need a court order to be changed. So accuracy is always important. And so we're just kind of mindful of that, and we'll be looking into disaster.
Across the country, the states who are performing the best, Massachusetts, New York in that regard. Moving on to clerk of the court, one of our obstacles that we face there is, actually the increasing number of litigants choosing to represent themselves. We spend many instances less than half of what the highest performing states in the country are spending.
We spend, we spend many instances less than half of what the highest performing states in the country are spending. And that can be very frustrating for individuals choosing to represent themselves.
We feel that we've done a good job. Our individual school districts, Beth C. Melton was on the Kempers' public school board, and she knows that they would drill in deep into their own school budget.
So to address that long-term, we'd like to work with the legal community, our friends in the judicial branch over there, to make sure that we are increasing access or availability to the legal assistance center. Additionally, in the clerk of the court department, our office equipment is quite old, so we're going to evaluate those needs as well. Moving on to our elections department, inarguably the largest achievement in that department last year was the execution of the presidential recount from the 2016 presidential election. It was ordered to a halt before we were concluded, but I think it did highlight the competency and coordination which Kent County elections are operated under. Another, one of our obstacles we face is in the past, may elections haven't been factored in when planning our budget, which kind of creates cash flow issues. We do get reimbursed by the entities that do conduct a may election, but on the upfront levels, there is a cash flow issue. So you can probably expect that we will be factoring may elections in as we go through our budget process this last year. Additionally, I don't, it's not an obstacle, it's just something that I think is important. We have a way to go in the area of campaign finance, compliance, transparency, and I think addressing that is going to require technological advancements, but it is a priority for me because the public does deserve that kind of transparency. So while we are taking great steps in campaign finance reports being available online, there's more work to do, and I think that's one of my priorities for that office. Looking down the road, a potential problem that we might face there is planning to fund the replacement of outdated election equipment. Right now, we're going, as you know, we're going through the process of selecting new election equipment throughout the county, and we've been fortunate to have leftover HAVA funds from the 2000, which resulted from the 2000 presidential election. Those funds, in addition to some supplemental state funds. I cannot emphasize how much the availability of those funds for us to utilize these last two go-rounds is the exception and not the rule. And when it comes to replacing the outdated equipment, 10, 12 years down the line, I really think that it's important that the county and all of our local jurisdictions prepare and plan for that. So it's not a crisis when the time comes. So across the board, you probably have gathered that technology is an issue within the office in a greater sense, and technological advances and investments in those are things that we'll be looking at. But our greatest strength, no doubt, is the hardworking staff that comes to work every single day with their sleeves rolled up. They present them, they present the office to the public every single day, and they have expertise, they have a great attitude, and I can't tell you how valuable that is. The clerk's office really does interact with individuals at every major milestone of their lives. They're good, the bad, the ugly, and the staff truly meets them wherever they are and provides that public level of public service that I think you can be proud of. Looking ahead into 2017 performance measurements, we will be taking the year to reflect upon weak areas where we can improve and build on the areas of strength that we can continue to grow. But we do lead the state in innovation, efficiency, and top-notch service. And my challenge is going to be to figure out how to measure the human component of what my office does, and explore how to include that in the future performance measurements. Because behind every single document that you see has indexed records or transactions, there's a name, there's a face, there's a story, and I don't want those people to get lost in the process of the numbers, because the people are our priority. And so I look forward to making that, being able to measure that next year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if I don't know the answer, I'm sure there's somebody behind me.
Thank you, clerk Williams.
The way this works is Kent ISD levies the village, Kent ISD collects the village, Kent ISD distributes 100% of those dollars back to the individual school districts on a per pupil basis, which is a huge increase of what was intended. So when registering, what is the process to ensure that number one, the registered US citizen, number two, they live in Kent County, and if there is anything that we can do to make sure they are registered elsewhere?
Sure. I think I'll start, I'll start the answer and I'd kind of fill in. Technically, we're, we at the county are kind of the pass-through when it comes to registering.
No, I've been involved registering voters in different places before.
We get the information, and that information goes to the local units. So there are things that I think we can do or should do, but a lot of times, our hands are tied by what we're allowed to do.
Probably marginally higher, I think the average price of a home right now is about $180,000 across Kent County.
As the clerk said, we are really advanced to those numbers that you see. The majority come from the Secretary of State range offices, and on every form. First question they're asked, are you a US citizen? So they have to sign, check that box before they are entered. In addition to that, as far as people being registered within Michigan, it is a statewide system, so if someone moves, then the previous clerk in their former jurisdiction is notified in state vote by voter file handles that. Secretary of State with Johnson does work with a network. It does not include 50 states, but a large number of states that coordinate that and work through their driver's file and voter registration file. So that the state is notified if someone moves out of state and gets registered, both there and then we are. Notified to take them on. We also obtain death records from the clerk's office at the state and other counties to remove deceased folks.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Here in West Michigan, there's a lot of millage fatigue right now. Seems like every time you turn around, there's another millage coming forward.
Money is always considered to be urgent or necessary. Given the kind of people I hang out during the day, the question I get asked the most is where are we in moving to complete electronic filing and court clerk? So if you have any thoughts about that, and put me in what to tell folks.
That's a good question. And I'm very excited about the potential that e-filing in our courts is going to have. We're kind of at the beginning stages of working with my counterparts in the court administration office and trying to figure out what role is the e-file going to play in terms of the official documents? Are we looking, are we looking at potentially replacing the actual files that we deal with in the office with the e-filing? Are we looking at supplementing them? So there's just an ease of flow between parties who utilize those files. Those are questions that we continue to kind of talk about and figure out, but before we even get there, we do have to have the e-filing 100% set up. And I met with Andy Falhammer yesterday, and he's looking forward to it as well. But there are IT issues that need to be addressed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want my worst enemy to be an IT director of a county this size because of the sheer demands placed on them. So they've been, they've been working on the financial services, software, transformation, or whatever. I'm sure somebody else can say it more eloquently than I can. But in order to get the e-filing where it needs to be, we have upgrades and updates to our CourtView system that needs to occur. And so those are all happening kind of all at the same time. And so once, once the CourtView gets updated, upgraded, I think you'll be able to see e-filing coming in sooner.
So maybe a follow-up, a somewhat related issue, because you also talked about the impact of more and more litigants engaging the court system without counsel. And that's one area where it gets impacted because unrepresented litigants generally don't know how to, or the capacity to e-file. My sense is that that's not in the statistics, that that's a significant growth trend, and that we will continue to see a greater and greater percentage of those that engage the judicial system, not represented.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering whether or not, and where are we having conversations about what implications that has for how we change what we do to...
With the e-filing, absolutely it does. That's, you know, looking into actually implementing the e-filing. We need to make sure there's access for those individuals to e-file, and whether that's having kiosks outside of my office, or again, making sure that we're able to have the legal assistance center up and running every day. Those are, those are things that we absolutely have to have. But when you look at how we provide that public access for e-filing for those unrepresented individuals, it can't come at the cost of security and making sure that when... individuals, it can't come at the cost of security and making sure that when, if they're using a public kiosk to make their filings e-recorded or e-filled, they need to know that their information is safe and secure from the next person who comes to that kiosk. So we are very mindful of the importance of providing access for those individuals for e-filing.
Again, my sense is that the system was really designed around represented parties, and so it's very attorney-friendly, which is not a bad thing. But as we move towards this different world, suggesting we may have to kind of fundamentally rethink how we engage and how we do that.
Until 1994, when the people that voted see in our polling place, when they see electronic readers or electronic voting with a printout, what do they expect to see?
They can expect to see a paper ballot, 100% assuredly. We believe that that is kind of a cornerstone right now with making sure that our elections are secure and that there's a paper trail and kind of keep us free from the rigging or the hacking that so many conversations take place in other states that have their systems connected electronically and wirelessly. But the beauty of our home rule is that where these elections are done at a local level, not, you know, they cast their ballot, and it goes into a machine that's not connected to anything regarding the internet. So the voters can expect the same kind of security that they get now with a paper ballot.
Now, because we fear that the next Congress will absolutely come at a expense of children.
Thank you, Chair. Clerk, just, I guess, a couple of follow-ups, if I may. One on Commissioner Vox. What's the timetable for the new election?
My understanding was that the grand bargain back with proposal A was that principal funding for the schools would go through the state.
Right now, if a county is looking to utilize the election equipment this November for city elections, the deadline to select an equipment, vendor will be next month, in the middle of April.
I guess I'm asking a little bit, what's the status of that conversation?
That's right now my goal. But we are looking to assess the, gauge the interest level of those municipalities that are having elections to make sure that they even want to roll out new equipment. I don't want to roll out new equipment in the November election for the first time around, so it's my goal to get it for November. So we'll have this in there shortly, within the next few weeks.
Okay, and then number two, just following up on Commissioner Corn dykes. Do we have any evidence in the last election that there was any voter fraud or registration fraud that we learned about in the recount or any other way?
To my knowledge, the only figure I know is that there were roughly 1,000 individuals who voted that had signed an affidavit because they didn't present their ID. As far as I'm aware with voter fraud, I don't think, based on audits conducted at the state level, that that was necessarily an indication of a huge problem. My philosophy is, I don't want to wait for a problem to make sure we don't have one.
In 2008, my good friend Bob Emerson, who was at the time the state budget director, found a loophole in the law, and for the first time, we began spending for higher education out of the School Aid Fund. Today, $782 million that used to be spent out of the general fund is now spent out of the School Aid Fund to finance community colleges and higher education. There's another $1.2 billion in the general fund that goes to higher education that could potentially come out of the School Aid Fund if they were to pass a reduction or rollback in the income tax, as was discussed in the very first week of activity in the legislature.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes. Recently, Governor Snyder, and I have a few questions. Governor Snyder has allocated a few more funds to the schools. That was recently in the newspaper. How does any of that benefit KISD?
None of that benefits KISD, but it does the 20 school districts and the 95,000 students we serve in the traditional public schools, as well as the 24 charter schools. But here's the answer to you more specifically. He proposed an increase of $100 per pupil. Districts, and that would be in all of those districts that have 75/11, so 15 of our districts will receive $100 per pupil. The cost, the increased cost of pension and the increased cost of healthcare will cost us about $70 per pupil. So that six tenths of 1% increase that was proposed is now $30 per pupil for the districts that are at the very lowest funding rate. For those districts that are a higher funding rate, like Forest Hills Public Schools, we have invested in equity, as former House Member Lisa Lyons will tell us. And so in investing in equity, what we do is we give the lowest-funded districts twice as much as we give the highest-funded districts. And so in Forest Hills, in East Grand Rapids, and in Caledonia, instead of having $100 per pupil increase, they will get a $50 per pupil increase, but they'll get a bill for $70 increase in terms of pension and healthcare. And so they'll have a $20 per pupil cut. So really, it's not an increase at all, although it sounds as though it is. Now, one good thing the governor did, very good thing, was to recommend an increase in the at-risk funding, and for the students who are at risk. That would be a great benefit to fully fund that formula, because the legislature did recognize some years ago that the flat rate per pupil really isn't adequate to meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. And I didn't assume that $100 was really, per student, was adequate when we're giving the lowest to a lot of these school systems, that are some of the larger school systems in Michigan. When we talk about our English learners, I just like to say, when we have our English learners that are here in this country, once they become citizens, they are U.S. citizens. And we're going to either pay in the front end or the back end when it comes to our English learners and our at-risk students, because we can pay now to educate them, or we'll be paying on the other end when we have uneducated people who end up on assistance or end up in the prisons. So I'm very supportive of helping our young children, especially our children, on the front end of making sure that they're educated, because education is one of the things that separates us and makes us one of the greatest countries in the history of the world. So I just wanted to put that out, that I believe our English learners, once they are citizens, they deserve the same rights as the rest of the students here. I wanted you to explain a little more on the additional resources and supports that would be in the classroom, though, that all the students would benefit from. How that would break down? What are the things you could physically see changing in those classrooms that would better their chances of having a greater education here?
We'd like to make sure that at a minimum, we can keep our class sizes the way they are. We'd like to lower the class sizes. When I say if students need additional help, what I mean is typically, we will pull some students out, provide them additional assistance in reading, or in phonetics, or in speech. And some students, if they don't have that in their individual education plan, we are no longer able to do that because we don't have the staffing to support it. And also, there are many programs that we are now developing that will do two things. One, have direct exposure to the world of work, so students understand the jobs that are out there, and they can aspire to those jobs. The other is early college, so that students have the opportunity to experience the rigor of college while they're still in high school and earn college credit. That gives them great confidence that they can succeed when they go to college, and it also lowers the debt burden on families to send their children to college. And so I think you will directly see more of those types of programs happening if this passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And I just had a final question. Did we cap, we did cap the pensions, did we not? Did the state cap the pensions?
The pension that I enjoy.
Covering the increase?
Yeah.
So they did help try to cost control that pension cost?
Right. The pension that is available, that was a part of the agreement when I started in the public schools is closed. Nobody else receives that type of pension. Any new employee has both a hybrid, which is part defined benefit, part defined contribution, and they're paying about 8.5% of their salary to those two pieces. That part is fully funded. It's the unfunded liability on the old pension that will go away in about 18 years.
Well, thank you so much today for your presentation. I really appreciate it. I think we all learned a lot and appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate your time very much. Thank you.